Baptist Theological Seminary. He is currently pursuing his doctorate of ministry with a concentration in evangelism and missions from Southern Baptist Theological Seminary. Frank and his wife Gina have three children, Emma, Eliza, and Joseph. Reverend Bowlin.
Thank you, sir. Now y'all know more about me than most of my folks in the church do, I think, so let's pray together. Father, today we ask of you wisdom for this board that they would be granted discernment and strength to carry out their duties and responsibilities that serve the greater good of the great state of Alabama, our citizens who are coming to learn, to develop, who are coming to learn, to develop skills and abilities to create greater opportunities and job market, but also responsible homes and families in our, in this state. We pray for our faculties at our community colleges as they are on the front line of training and equipping students for further careers and academic development. God may they not grow weary in their, their responsibilities and their tasks today. For the administration of those colleges that they would be granted wisdom as they chart direction and address prevalent needs. For those who serve in industries around them that, that create hope-filled and safe environments conducive to learning. So as every action taken in this room today, we pray that it would all lead to the greater development of the citizens of Alabama through a strengthening of the community college system. And so, God, may you glorify your name through the folks gathered here. May you use them as instruments of the greater good for the people of this state. And may they exercise their responsibilities in a way that is right and in keeping with their fiduciary responsibilities. And may you use all the work that's done here for the good of your great name. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend Bowlin. Would you join me in standing for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Jeff Schell.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Valerie Gray.
Present.
Mr. Chris Lightsey.
Present.
Mr. Ron Houston.
Present.
Mr. Goodrich Rogers.
Present.
Mr. Levon Brown.
Present.
Mr. Tim McCarthy.
On the phone, President.
Dr. Yvette Richardson.
Present.
Governor Kay Ivey.
Thank you. Our agenda was distributed in advance of our board, of this meeting to our board members for their review. I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So move. I have a motion from Mr. Duss.
Second.
Second from Mr. Houston. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of approval, please raise your hand. Agenda is approved. With that, we will actually call for any public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped the minutes. Approval of the minutes. Our minutes were also approved in advance and distributed to our board members. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Lightsey, second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Gray. Any discussion? Hearing none. Are hearing none. All those in favor, show by the raise of your hand. The minutes are approved. Now we'll get to the public comments. Do we have any one signed up for public comments? No public comments. With that, we, if you've seen our agenda, we typically would have a college spotlight. We are actually foregoing that and will move to the next item, item eight on our agenda, which is executive legal and public information. The first action item is from the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees, our 2024 meeting schedule, which was shown during the last work session. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion from Mr. Duss, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rod. All those, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Our meeting schedule for 2024 is approved. All the places we will go this year. All right. Next up, we have a recommendation from the Alabama Community College System General and Garage Liability Insurance. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees authorize and direct each college and the Alabama Technology Network to purchase general liability and garage liability insurance coverage under a policy recommended by the Chancellor for the coverage period November 15th, 2023, and ending November 14th, 2024. It is further recommended that the annual premium be apportioned among the colleges and ATN as determined by the Chancellor. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion from Ms. Gray, second by Mr. Schell. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those, all in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. The recommendation passes. Next, we have a recommendation from the Alabama Community College System Cyber Liability Insurance. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees authorize and direct each college and the Alabama Technology Network to purchase cyber liability insurance coverage under a policy recommended by the Chancellor for the coverage period of November 15th, 2023, and ending November 14th, 2024. It is further recommended that the annual premium be apportioned among the colleges and ATN as determined by the Chancellor. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
A motion from Mr. Lightsey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Houston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion passes. Next, we have a recommendation coming from Coastal Alabama Community College, sale of real property. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the President of Coastal Alabama Community College and the Alabama Community College System to sell off-campus property located at Bell Street and Joseph Avenue in Bruton, Alabama. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Gray. All those in favor, please raise your hand or a voice vote. The item passes. Next, we actually have a recommendation from the Calhoun Community College Purchase of Equipment. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the President of Calhoun Community College to expend $810,000 to purchase a MNI Mechatronics 4.0 training system with 12 stations for the Advanced Technology Center. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion from Mr. Duss, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Valerie. All those in favor, please raise your hand or voice vote. The item passes. Next, we have an item from the Northeast Alabama Community College, Construction of Softball Field Indoor Practice Facility. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Northeast Alabama Community College to proceed with the project name Construction of Softball Field Indoor Practice Facility and also accept the alternate bid for construction of the stadium seating-covered canopy. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than March 1st, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion from Mr. Duss, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand or a voice vote. The item pass. Next, we have an item, action item from Reed State Technical College, Building 200 renovation for healthcare. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Reed State Technical College to proceed with the demolition bid for the project named Building 200 Renovation for Healthcare. The renovation project is for interior and exterior improvements to renew the building. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than February 1st, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion from Mr. Schell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Houston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand or a voice vote. The motion passes. Next, we have an action item from Trenum State Community College, Security System Solution for Trenum and Patterson Campuses. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Trenum State Community College to proceed with the project security system solution for Trenum and Patterson campuses. The scope of work for this project will include the installation of security cameras, access controls, card swipes, and thermal imaging cameras for all buildings located on the Trenum and Patterson campuses. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion from John, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ron. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand or a voice vote. The item passes. Next, we have an action item from Shelton State Community College, Upgrade and Enhancement to Network Switches, Martin Campus. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the President of Shelton State Community College to expend $1,336,303 for the purpose of upgrading and enhancing the network switches on the college, colleges, Ma- Martin Campus. All those in favor? I'm sorry, I need a motion first.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion from Mr. Houston, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand or a voice vote. The motion passes. So that takes us through section eight and nine. We have next personnel.
I'm in receipt of a letter. I hereby give notice of my retirement as President of Coastal Alabama Community College effective December the 31st, 2023, Craig Pouncy. And he expresses his appreciation for the support of the community that has supported the school and continued to do so. So his resignation and retirement become effective December the 31st.
Do we have a motion to accept the retirement of Dr. Pouncy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the retirement.
We have a motion from Mr. Schell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Duss. All those in favor, please raise your hand. The item is, is approved.
At the same time, I would like to announce that officially, as of this afternoon, I will appoint Fraser Payne to serve as interim president at Coastal. Fraser is actually directly employed by the system, but he's been assigned to Belleville for several years now. Fraser is an experienced base. He worked as a legislative aide for the former Congressman Brad DeBurns, as an aide for the former Congressman Joe Bonner. He knows a lot of people in that community. He is familiar with the system. And I think with his appointment, the school can continue to go right on. There's a strong staff of people there. And so I'm gonna go ahead and make that appointment on a temporary basis. Just want to, and we'll be notifying and actually probably have already sent out the email to notify them of that appointment. We also have in the personnel report, David.
Yes, sir.
I want to make a recommendation to fill the position as President of Shelton State with an individual that is actually and has been there for several years, someone that has always been an impressive employee, does a tremendous job of what he has assigned the responsibility to do. So I'm gonna make that recommendation to Dave Jonathan Coe.
Board of Trustees, Chancellor, I would like to introduce you to Dr. Jonathan Coe. He was born in Mobile, Alabama. I was as well. And raised throughout the southeastern United States. As the grandson of a southern desegregation area high school principal, football coach, the son of a teacher and minister, and the husband of an elementary teacher, his primary focus from day one has been on education. He earned his bachelor degree in public administration and policy, his master's degree in public administration, and his PhD in higher education administration, all from the University of Alabama. He began his tenure at Shelton State in 2015 when he was hired as the Director of Grants at the college. He received a promotion in 2018 and took on the task of acting as the governmental relations person at the, at the college, and again received a promotion in October of 2021 and was appointed the Dean of Workforce Development. I'm sorry, Workforce and Economic Development. Dr. Coe, the President Coera will begin at Southern Union, I'm sorry, Shelton State on November the 15th, 2023. Dr. Coe has with him his wife Ashley, his three sons, Henry, Harrison, and Walter. But the other member of the immediate family, Kona, the Chocolate Lab, had a previous engagement in the 2020 or 2021. I give you Dr. Jonathan Coe.
Well, thank you all so much for this wonderful opportunity to serve the community that my family and I have fallen in love with. I have witnessed many positive changes in Tuscaloosa since arriving in 2007 and am proud to call it home. And I do want this group to know, we recently commissioned a community perception survey of over 400 respondents in West Alabama. I'm happy to report that Shelton State was overwhelmingly favored at a rate of 45 to one when compared to other colleges in our area. That's 45 to one. We may not have a plethora of NCAA championships, but we do have a tremendous responsibility of being our community's college. We couldn't take that role on without the amazing faculty and staff, the work at Shelton State. The overall quality of instruction and genuine care that our instructors pour into our students certainly sets us apart. In addition, the time, effort, and attention to detail that our staff exude to make this college great cannot be overstated. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the local and business and industry support, certainly second to none, and that's evidenced by the year's seventh WOW Worlds of Work being hosted on our campus and all the facets of the community that convene to support us. We certainly have plenty of reasons to be optimistic about the future and are well-positioned to grow and make a positive impact on the lives of so many. And you have seen my wife and kids here with me today, and I just want to say, I'm looking forward to serving in this role, at least until they come through Shelton State and graduate. I cannot wait to continue our hard work in the community as we come alongside our partners, develop new ways to grow our economy, retain talent, and develop a first-class community that represents all that this great state stands for. And I just want to thank you all again for this opportunity. I won't let you down.
So you've heard the rec, excuse me, the recommendation of the Chancellor and Dr. Coe's statement. We now have to take the vote. So do we have a motion?
I make the motion to recommend Dr. Jonathan Coe to the President's role as Shelton State Community College.
We have motion to his second, second from John. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Coe is the new president at Shelton State? Dr. Coe, as you mentioned in your remarks, it is an awesome responsibility to be the college of a community of which you now join 23 other presidents in that same role. So we welcome you to that role, and also you're a beautiful family, and the boys and the one that you didn't bring along, Kona, as well. So we wish all the best of luck as you start this leg of your career at Shelton State. All right, thank you. Any committee reports? Hearing none, hearing silence. Our next session will actually be right here in this room? Oh, I thought you, that's what I was asking you. I'm sorry. We have the Chancellor's report. I was asking him that, that's when he said no. So I thought he said no. I was like, okay.
I was thinking in that category. Susan, I've asked Susan if she would put together with a group of our people a report kind of updating on a lot of the things that are happening. And before you start, I see President Brown here. I'd like, I'm not calling on you, I just want to recognize you. Because I won't ever forget this, early in my working here as Chief of Staff, something happened outside the state that was rather tragic at a school. And I turned to someone and I asked this question, who would I call if this was us? There was no plan for who I would call. There was hardly any plan of managing the public safety requirement and the other kinds of activities. And so Keith Brown was so kind and supportive of letting us kind of use his school as an example in furnishing staff and training. And it's kind of the beginning of all of this activity. And I appreciate that support. But Susan, go ahead now.
Thank you. Well, that's really consistent with what we're gonna be talking about today. Good morning, everyone. As Chairman Rowe mentioned, we do not have a college spotlight today because we would like to spotlight several different things that we will use the title for, Upliving the Mission. We do so many amazing things in the system every day to help students and to help business and industry. In small ways, in big ways, we have a great impact on all of our students and all of our communities in such a good way that we would like to spotlight from time to time something called Living the Mission, where we will have colleges come in and give you a glimpse of the amazing things that they do to help bolster their communities. So we have several of those reports today, and I will just call them out in order so that I can sit down and won't have to jump up all the time. But we're gonna start with President James Mitchell, followed by Chief Failey, Vice President Theresa Mays, President Brock Kelly, our own Communications Director Ebony Horton, and then our Vice Chancellor Neil Scott will bring you an update on a committee that he has been forming as well as an enrollment update. But all of these, as you will see, really do reflect how our colleges are living our mission. Dr. Mitchell?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Rowe, members of the board, Chancellor Baker, I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to briefly update you on a very exciting initiative that is taking, taking place at Wallace Community College Selma and Craigfield Airport Authority. I know you were just there last month, but this is something that we have pretty much finished putting the final touches to, and that's called a Real Rural Aviation Initiative. That will be a program sponsored by Wallace Community College, Marion Military Institute in cooperation with Craigfield Airport. Craigfield Airport is an old Air Force airport. We are trying to revive it, and it is being revived. We have some aviation-related industries who are there. We are working in cooperation with them. We're going to offer airplane mechanics. We're going to offer avi- avionics. We're gonna offer air traffic control as well as aircraft, I mean, as well as aviation maintenance. You know, all of those vehicles and other things you see running around airports, they, somebody has to maintain those and operate it, as well as operation of the aviation services. We're going to visit President Shackett Monday to look at his operation because it's somewhat similar. As the old saying goes, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. But it is something we're very excited about. Our state senator, this last legislative session, gave us $2 million appropriation to get this started. And he says that if it's successful, it's gonna be more coming. But it's gonna involve middle school students in terms of career exploration and discovery. It's gonna involve dual enrollment students. It's gonna involve general, general college students, as well as anyone who wants to take advantage of the course. It's both credit and non-credit. As I said, it's a, it's a great opportunity. Oh, I forgot to mention the other program, air pilot training, to get your license. So all of those things that is multiple career pathways, so you're not locked into any one particular thing. You have that choice. So we're very excited about it, and we hope and know that it's gonna be quite successful. Are there any questions?
I want you to talk about where all you're gonna be doing this.
Where?
Yeah, what, what high schools are gonna be benefiting from this.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. We're gonna, we're gonna be serving seven counties in the, in the rural black belt. And those are the counties that we presently serve, counties Dallas, Wilcox, Maringold, Demopolis, Green, Hale, Sumter. You tested my memory, Chancellor, there. But all of the counties that we presently serve, but that we are, we're excited about it because we feel this is an opportunity to offer another, again, career path for students who want to choose something different than what we currently offer. There are many great opportunities in this aviation field, and we feel that having this program is gonna open up the doors to many other things, which is also gonna help our students and our, once our graduates come through that program, to help them in terms of their growth and vitality. So we, we, we're gonna do it two ways, as I said. It's gonna be credit for those who really, I just wanna take some courses out, I just wanna get some training, and we're gonna also do it for credit. But we, we, we think it's important also to start early, and that's why we're working with the middle schools, to get them involved and get them interested. We'll carry around a simulator to the various schools or various areas. They don't have to come to us. We will have a mobile simulator that goes around. We will expose students to, to the aviation industry and all aspects of it and let them fall into whatever area they feel interests them the most. Did I explain it a little?
That, that, I, I just think it's, it's, it's really, for this state, is a new attempt to reach all the schools in all the counties that we serve. And I, I, I think that's the most notable thing about the entire project. I think you left out Lount County.
Oh, Lount, yes, I'm sorry. I'm 75, Chancellor, it's a struggle to name, know what my name is.
It's bad when you have to be prompted by somebody.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. And we're happy to have that set of programming coming online in the black belt for sure for those students.
Hi, I was looking for the... Oh, well. Chairman, chancellor, board, what I want to do is kind of give you an overview of a three-year journey. Where we stand today in safety and security is far cry forward from where we were. In the very beginning, Chancellor Baker mentioned the fact of we needed to know who to call and who would handle scenario if something happened. Well, Keith Brown and I have gone through quite a bit over the years together. If you notice, part of the screen shows an officer-involved shooting at Jeff State. This happened in May of 2019. We had an emotionally disturbed individual come on our campus with the intention to behead students, faculty, and staff. We didn't let that happen. We did shoot him. We did package him. We successfully did an involuntary commitment. He went through both the legal system on criminal and mental health side. So this is one of those where you got to look at a complete package. When we look at emergency operation plans, and if you'll notice, board, I actually left y'all some copies up there if you want to take a look. That's the one we have for the system office. Every college now has something very similar. Those are abbreviated models of our longer plans. The catch that we have with emergency operation plans is when something happens, we don't have time to pull it off the shelf, blow off the dust, and figure out what happens. So it's all about training. But, and when I mention training, it's constant improvements. Give you an example of an improvement that we made over the years. I was teaching classes to law enforcement on gunshot trauma. It's our so-called Stop the Bleed. Those of you who have prior military, we used to do buddy aid, self aid every year as a drill. Well, ironically, I was doing it, Professor Brown looked at me and said, you know, why don't we do this for everybody? And it turned into annual training. Well, this is actually spread now so that we're, every college in the system has individuals trained in Stop the Bleed. Most of the faculty and staff have attended the training, and we have kits available in the schools. Now, this is not just for what you think with an active shooter. This could be a tornado, a car wreck, or anything else. It applies across the board. Another issue we had to deal with was our opioid overdoses. Y'all know that the state of Alabama, the United States, has had these consistently. We did not want to be behind the curve in it. So in May of this year, we did training with our deans of students. We've been doing, we've actually created training that's rolling out now on NeoEd for every employee in the system have on how to handle and respond that opioid overdose. Every college now has multiple doses of Narcan available. And there, again, that was provided by the state free of cops. They jumped in with us with a partnership of pushing this out. Now, if you remember of July of last year, we had a series of bomb threats that, we actually had 17 colleges that had HoCh bomb threats called in. Remember I said the EOP is a living document? This is where we needed to do some enhancements. So what we did is we started doing two types of training. We did a shorter training for faculty and staff that takes about an hour on appropriate response. But then we provided training across the state where we invited not only our faculty and staff administrators, but K through 12 faculty and staff and first responders. And we taught a deeper approach to it. What we did on that is we taught basic fundamentals of explosives, explosive theory. We taught how to, how bomb techs work so we can react appropriately with them. And then we went out and did a demo. Now, if you pay real close attention to the young lady in the center, this is our own Susan Price. And she is letting off, this is a two-pound block of C4 that she's just let go on that one. Y'all can't see that she was grinning when that one happened. So there again, you know, it's one of those with our partnerships with both the federal and state side, and I like to introduce and give people opportunities to do stuff they generally don't get to do. But there again, that's changed our approach, another part of it. Now, laying the background on this, this is where in chancellor's policy, we've actually mandated that every new student, every new employee, annual training for every employee on their emergency operation plans. And then we started adding in our drills and exercises. Now, our drills and exercises actually lead in to a bigger picture. Now, let's get into behavioral intervention because this is one of our biggest issues on response. We actually, when we built the program at Jeff State, this is not Mark was bright enough or smart enough to come up with it. I just have really good friends. The SAC from Secret Service in Birmingham got a promotion and went to Washington DC and was in charge of the profile unit. And that's where they worked the profiles for executive protection, but they were tasked by Congress to build the profiles for the actual active shooters. And it's not what you think. When we see profiles, most people are thinking rage, sex, color, nationality. These are behavior profiles. Well, when he got there, he called me and said, Mark, I've got a waiting for specialists that can help you. And we built profiles not only to address them, but victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, mental illness, targeted violence. We have been able to put together a team that has identified and changed the lives of, we're to the points of probably over 150 different major events already. Now, if you notice this, I've got a picture of us doing the behavioral intervention training. Secret Service comes down every couple of years to do updates with us to get us back on board. But I want to bring attention to a model that we're using because we're getting national attention to it. The Colorado model is what has been pushed out with the behavioral intervention because it's where your students and your school administrators see a potential problems. They have a meeting together and then they decide to reach out to law enforcement. Our model's a little bit different because law enforcement is in the center from the very beginning, and we've got an intelligence component, we'll talk about that more in detail, that rounds this out. That's where you'll see the quote from Casey Allman. Casey is actually retired this morning from Secret Service. He's taken a job in Tennessee at Homeland Security there. But he talks about us being the model for absolutely everybody with this system. If you take a look at it, in 2021, we worked 39 cases, 22, we worked 33 cases. And we'll talk about when we worked it, the resolution. And I'll show you some examples in a minute. So far, we've had 41 cases and we had two more submitted this morning. So the number's increasing, and it's not a bad thing. It's early intervention. We're stopping things before they actually happen. I want to give you just a little look at what happens. If we're going to be successful, we have to bring in students, faculty, and staff. That is the foundation. These are events that have been given to us that we're able to deal with. The difference between our model and the Colorado model is we're actually taking action within sometimes 15 to 30 minutes of the report coming in. The very first one you see of this is a student that was a veteran. He had multiple tours overseas. He was suicidal. You can see his post from the, at the top, that's letting you know what he's thinking. I get the, if you notice the time on this, I'm getting notified about this about 12:30 in the morning. We contacted the local agency. We were at the house, and we were, and by 3 o'clock in the morning, we had him in the VA hospital. If you look at the one next to us, this is a shooting that we actually averted. If you notice on this one, we got a couple. There, one is a Jeff State student, and the other one is a UAB student. And they had a dispute, and he's saying, I'd rather we both be dead. Well, I get a phone call within about five minutes of this text conversation. We were able to stop that. There again, this is not everything solved with arrest. This was an involuntary commitment because he was an obvious danger to himself and others. The one you see next is Trenton. Theresa Mays was involved in this one. This is a text from a student. I shoot the whole school up. I've got two blocks there with three 30-round clips and a pea shooter. Not every case we work requires an individual going to jail. This is an example. This is a student who needed mental health, needed counseling, who needed guidance and mentoring. And see, that's where Theresa worked out really well in that response. If you look at another one, you can see another one. This is from Enterprise, Jeff Spence's case. If you notice, this is another one that he ended up working involuntary commitment on. Our approach is to stop things before it happens. In the media, you see all the time Nashville, the shootings where this was posted. We're working on getting a hold of that ahead of the event so we can stop the cycle. Now, this is where I want to talk about our investigative support unit. Now, our investigative support unit is a huge part of this. We're lucky because we have individuals who they're technically on payroll, but really they're donating their time for what they do. The chief cybersecurity officer for UAB, Ryan Island, actually is the center of this. Mike and Ramona Harrell, who also works cybersecurity at UAB. What they do is they do open source social media. So as soon as we get that initial response, we get the texts, we get the emails saying we've got a problem student, we start looking at what they're posting, open source. And you're saying, why just open source? These people are crying out for help. And if you look at some of the cases we've got, the one on the first one you see, this one was making homemade grenades. Goodenough ATF was involved with this. If you notice one in the middle, we had another suicidal student. We were able to intervene in it. We had another one that was posting who had made threats about shooting and then posting pictures of the guns. We also had another student that was posting about selling drugs on our campus. And that's one I really want to highlight because this is where, we're not just saving one student, we're saving multiples because we can't let our students be exposed to that kind of behavior. One of the incidents I'd like to kind of highlight, Chief Mario Hodge at Central Alabama. Mario just got through making a distribution case with somebody who wanted to sell cocaine on his campus. The changing from security police is stopping these issues. And there's no, I don't think anybody can find anything negative on those kind of events. I'm sorry, let me back up just a second, folks. I went the wrong way. This one's on me, chancellor. I messed it up. Alright, let me continue to talk for just a second. Sorry about that. This is where we want to get into CLERI Act. CLERI Act was another issue that could cost us major money. After our shooting in 2019, I had to go through a full-scale CLERI audit with the Department of Education. In that, they're looking at us actually being compliant with all the statutory regulations from producing an annual security report to our timely emergency notifications, our daily crime logs. There's quite a bit that's involved in that. I want you to take a look at the fines. In October of '86, it started out at $25,000. We moved to 22. Every violation is $62,000. Our average college who has major violations is paying anywhere between $5 and $13 million in fines. Now, when we went through our audit, we came out without finding. Had some minor stuff we had to do with, but we were lucky. But that's when the chancellor asked me to work with the rest of the colleges to make sure we get on board. So for the past three years, on July 1 of every year, every college is sending us copies, and I'm helping them go through it to make sure everything's in line. There again, this is a huge way of preventing us from having a huge expenditures. Now, let's talk about drills and exercises. It's one thing to have a policy, but it's another one to test it. And the good thing about it is if you test it correctly, you actually find your deficiencies. You find where you work on training and you work on enhancements. And that's exactly what we've done. We did a combination with tabletop drills, and we've done a lot of full-scale drills. If you notice on some of these, we're looking, we're pushing to make sure events that we've seen in the news never occur on our campus. We've seen what happened at Parkland. We saw the negatives of what happened at Uvalde. These are our way of preventing it. But we don't just work with them with ourselves, we're working with our community partners. Aleah's now working with us with Aleah Swat, and we're actually moving around the state conducting these drills. And when we, instead of a drill being 30-minute drill, we're turning them into eight-hour training days where we're teaching new techniques from breaching doors you see on the side to bus assaults. If y'all remember what happened in Midland, Alabama, several years ago on the bus, we're making sure, we're looking at potential problems and addressing those ahead of time. This is where we looked at and did a real critical assessment. And we looked at where are we and where do we need to be? And it came out real simple. We need to look at our hiring policies. We need to look at training, equipment, and then policy that just guides us to get us in the right place. That's where we're going to start off with background checks. Now, in 2021, and then later on in 2022, the legislator passed new laws that dealt with law enforcement hiring. We don't want to have that problem officer going from department to department to department. So that was just enhancing the background checks. As we were doing that, the chancellor asked me, well, is this not what we need to be doing? I said, absolutely. But I'd like to bring us to the standard of what I have at the city, what I had at the city, major cities have, what Aleah does. And it involves three other things. We've added polygraph, psychological exams, and drug screenings. Since this time, when we're now doing it in-depth, we're stopping the problems of hiring potentially bad employees. We're picking up on PTSD issues. We're picking up on other issues, sometimes criminal issues even when we get into the polygraphs. So there again, very positive step forward. Our continuing education, it's not just about us, it's with our community partners. You're going to see everything from defensive tactics, domestic violence, drugs and narcotics, getting into leadership. This is being offered literally at no cost around the state already. Now, let's talk about transforming. Now, I want to bring it, highlight two of our colleges. And the first one, it's going to be Dr. Anthony with Lawson. Because this is where a lot of this really started. Chief Lanton and I sat down and we started looking at training that the security officers had. And it involved both going to the range and a variety of less lethal options, being able to be effective in the job. And that's where we found deficiencies and we found ways of addressing that. We were able to take a, what we had at Shelton was an unarmed department. It's now 50/50 or somewhere in the neighborhood between sworn law enforcement and armed and trained security. And their people did extraordinary. They've done multiple days of active shooter training, everything else from legal issues, use of force, everything we could think to give them, to equip them to do their job. Now, let's highlight all the new police departments. And this is actually in the orders that the ORIs was initiated. If you notice, Reed State was our first one. Brock at LBW was our second one. We went to Trenton, Central Alabama, Marion Military Institute, Gadsden, Drake, Sneed, Chattahoochee, and Northwest Shoals is now finishing their hiring process. So right now, we've got 22 fully functional departments, and we're within just weeks of having one at Northwest Shoals. And if you notice, we're getting really positive press from everybody. Mr. Houston was at the swearing-in with us at Drake State. That was a very positive for both the community, from the campus, from the public. You know, this has been accepted really well across the board. Now, part of our new initiatives is we went back, and this is where working with the presidents, our chiefs, and we needed to look at a roadmap where we needed. So what we did is we started working on standardizing equipment, making sure our guys had exactly what they needed to accomplish the mission. We needed to work on mutual aid agreements, both between agencies. We have one now that we're finishing up so that if a college needs help, we can pull swarm from one college to another, and we And we actually share jurisdictional authority in those events. We're about to do some real enhanced training to actually push our police departments to where they need to be. In November, we'll be doing the first part of the evidence tech class. Where it'd be collection, preservation, packaging of evidence. There's times we're going to have to do that. You'll see that we're pushing in our photography class. And then you're seeing the Stop the Bleed kits. We've put Stop the Bleed kits in almost every college in the system now. So we've got a, we're building those spots and this is a continuing growth. Now, our new standards, this is what's really good. It's because with the buy-in with the presidents have pushed us to a new level. We can now standardize, this is what we're going to do and how we're going to do it from now on. And it's without getting too deep into it, think about the basics. We're having fully functional police departments at our colleges. They may not be staffed twenty four hours a day, but that's fine. We have security, but during the hours that there are actually students and faculty and staff, community on our campus, they will be at least trained security officers and equipped to be able to take care of it. We're even dealing with security after hours with our dorms because we realize things happen. And you'll notice that we're getting with the enhanced standards. This is where it's not a cost to the colleges. Our investigative support unit, we have plenty of instructors amongst us. So instead of the colleges having to reach out and get individual instructors on each of these subjects, we already have them. So we can take care of that for them. Basically, what we've moved into is we're looking at a new era. I cannot thank the presidents enough, the chiefs that we have. We're changing our ability to protect our campuses. Just so everybody can see, chiefs, if you will, stand up for just a second. If you look at it, we have got a great group of chiefs. If you look at the level of experience. Our average experience is twenty two years among the chiefs. You have many of subject matter experts in this group. We're really lucky to have them and I'm really pleased to have them. Thank you, guys. All right, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chancellor Baker, the Board of Trustees. On behalf of Dr. Kimber Chambers, the faculty staff at Trenton State Community College, I am pleased to talk to you all this morning about a few initiatives that we've put in place to increase our enrollment for our students at Trenton State. I thought I was going to start. Well, I can talk without the presentation. How about that? Well, at Trenton State, in an effort to increase our enrollment and with the, in efforts to support the mission of not only the Alabama Community College System, but also Trenton State, we have established Saturday and activity registration initiatives to increase our enrollment and to meet our students where they are. We have a Student Services Saturday and also a Super Saturday Blitz that we host each year, each semester to culminate and put everything in a one stop shop. Our Student Services Saturday takes place two Saturdays in July and we try to do them throughout the semester to help our students in the five counties in which we serve to have not only admissions and financial aid, but also having the business office, the records office, and our dual enrollment coordinators onsite to talk to our parents and our students who would not be able to come to us during a Monday through Friday. The reality of it is that we have commuter students. The reality of it is that we have a lot of non-traditional students and a lot of non-traditional and traditional students who sometimes need their parents. So it is our goal to be able to accommodate them in whichever way possible. During 2021, at the, of course, we all knew the pandemic. We were doing everything to make sure that we were doing what we could to get people back on campus. And so our efforts to do that, we also established what we call the Super Saturday Blitz. It's this big one stop events enrollment process in which we have everybody on campus from advisors to the business office, our dual enrollment, food trucks, radio broadcasts and everything onsite in one stop to help our students from nine to twelve on Saturdays to enroll. The purpose of this, as I said before, is we realized that people can't come every day between Monday through Friday, even with extended hours. So our goal was to meet them where they were. And our efforts to communicate this, we did, we collaborated with a lot of radio stations in the area. We did live broadcasts on campus on that day as well to ensure that people knew that we were there. We provided food, trucks, incentives with raffles. We also were partnered with local agencies such as Hope Inspired Ministries, COSA, and the City of Montgomery often as well to collaborate to get people to enroll. As a result of this, in that one day event, we registered over a hundred students. And that for us is huge, of course. And our president, Dr. Kimber Chambers, also received several communications from parents who appreciated us and our staff's willingness to be able to serve students on that day. And that's just kind of one of the highlights, of course, Trenton that I'd love to spotlight. In addition, in our efforts to increase enrollment as well, we have several other initiatives that we've embarked upon. One I'd love to speak on this morning also is many thanks to Vice Chancellor David Walters and the Heart of Alabama Food Bank. We've been able to service our students through the creation of a food pantry, which we will do a soft opening this week. And that has helped us, of course, to address the basic needs of our students as well as the increase of different program offerings from logistics, self-occupy and other things. So thank you this morning. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Rome, members of the board, Chancellor Baker. I'm honored today to come to you and highlight, introduce you to a program that I believe is a solution to the workforce issue that we always talk about, labor participation rate. Too many times, as a student grows up, going through school, they're met with a challenge or a saying that we personally don't believe at L B W. But that saying that they're told is, college may not be for you. You may need to go to the workforce or, you know, college is not for you. That's a core belief that we do not believe. We believe that college is for everyone. Post-secondary education is for everyone. L B W is for everyone. And under that belief, in 2021, two years ago, a little over two years ago, we created the Rise Program, which is a program dedicated to transitioning individuals with disabilities from where they are when they graduate and into the workforce. And the three goals that we set out to accomplish in this was, one, increase the labor participation rate amongst this population. If you look at the data within this population, seventy percent of individuals with disabilities are not in the labor force. That is a population that can be the solution. And we're working extremely hard at L B W to identify individuals within our community to put to work. The second goal is to prove to business industry that individuals with disabilities can be that solution for them. And we've had great response from our local business industry. And the third goal is to provide an individualized program of instruction with a focus on self advocacy. I think it's extremely important for an individual to be able to advocate for themselves as they go in and find a job, keep a job. Now, I'm a firm believer, when you start a program, you don't truly have a successful program until you have results. We've been running this a little over two years. We've had fifteen individuals to go through the program. And right now, we have nine currently employed. We have two that have matriculated into our credit bearing courses that are current students. We have two that are current in our program, Rise Program, and we have two that are currently not placed. However, one is working on her driver's license. Am I correct on that? So to give you a little more in depth or just a view of kind of what the Rise Program's all about, I have a video for you. And then I'd like to introduce you, the heart and soul of our programs, Ms. Jeannie Sanders. She'll talk after the video.
We have a group of individuals who need a purpose. And every human being needs a purpose. It may be to govern the state of Alabama or it might be to smile at people when you bag the groceries. But everybody needs a purpose. And there's an untapped resource in our children who learn differently because many of them are never given a purpose. And that's a travesty, honestly. So this program taps into a workforce we've never used or very seldom used and also gives these wonderful human beings a purpose. Sarah was graduating from high school and we didn't have a direction for her to go in. But we knew that she was smart and that she could do more. And we wanted her to continue learning. So when this, when I saw the article, I thought, this is, this is an answer to prayer.
My name is Chase Salls. I'm the Accounting and Human Resource Manager here at A D C. We feel these students can play an integral role in the solution to the ever increasing workforce shortage here in our, in our area. We're very excited to partner with L B W in this pilot program. We hope that it provides us a playbook for the rest of the state. And we'd love to see this across the board, you know, not just here in Andalusia, our local community.
I'm Leslie Ingram. I'm twenty one. I graduated from Strawn High School. It's been really, it has been real good to see how it is and see how we first start out and maybe people will come and do it some more. I've learned a lot of jobs in the community and places and all that. It's paid and you can see how people work and they do things.
Sarah wanted to go to college. All her friends were going to college and she, she wanted to go. She'll tell you, I like to learn.
Can you tell me your name?
Sarah Jane Sanders.
You really want to help people.
I do, but I really like taking care of them.
You like to take care of people?
Yeah.
Make them feel happy?
Yeah.
Make them feel better?
Make them feel better. I like sing alongs.
Yes.
And I like to do people's makeup.
And hair?
And hair.
Yeah.
I have taught for thirty three years. I've been in education thirty, thirty one years in the state of Alabama. Because of my experience, I can look at what the program is offering Sarah and I feel like and believe it's offering her exactly what she needs. It's offering what she needs educationally as well as to help prepare her for a future job. It's a big deal.
Chancellor Baker, Board of Trustees, again, thank you for having us here with you today. I also, my name is Jeannie Sanders and I have been working with the Alabama Rise Program at L B W since it started a couple of years ago. I first would like to thank, I have two students who have come with me today. And this is a big departure from what is, is the normal day for us. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of them taking time. Ty Reese is a current student and Madison is a graduated student. And I'll tell you, Madison came with me because she works nights. And I told her she could nap in the car and she agreed. However, I will point out that I asked four other past students and two, well, I guess I asked six other past students. Two of them are currently doing full time, four credit classes at our college. And every one of them were so excited we were coming, but declined, respectfully declined because they were not willing to miss work. Part of me was like, boo, come with me. The other part of me was like, that is exactly what I wanted to hear. So the program seems to be proving the statistics, what, what Dr. Kelly believed when he started it in the first place. So we're very proud of that. What the Rise Program offers to our students and to our community is an opportunity to provide some education, some real world expectations, frank conversations that many of our students aren't getting either at home or in their high school education that are very important when you go into the workplace. So we are able to address these questions, have these conversations, do additional training. We do complete the ACE and MAPS training that is offered through adult education. Students may have different, well, they all do. Of the fifteen students we've had, I've not had any who really said, yeah, I want to do exactly what he wants to do. And so we look at each of them individually and what do we need to be successful in your goal? And that's what we do. But we also do some things that, that aren't really incorporated in any of our curriculum. So we do sexual harassment training. The last thing I want is for one of my students to have to do an annual sexual harassment training for their employer and the H R person be the one who has to tell them what this really means and why this is really important. So we do things like that. Again, we're just preparing for those real world experiences. And I will also say, one of the things that Dr. Kelly touched on is also self advocating. For a student, well, any individual who has a disability or even an area that is just simply a challenge. If you ever ask me to do math and I don't get out my calculator, don't trust my math. It is a challenge. So we all have something. And so one of my students, we placed her in her internship. You actually saw her in the video out of my very first cohort. Her name is Leslie. She and Austin both, and they told me I could share their stories. She and Austin both interned with A D C. Austin was hired, Leslie was not. Normally, this wouldn't be a big deal, but they are siblings. And so Austin had survivor's guilt. Leslie just felt bad because she wasn't hired. And so we worked through that. And one day, I get a call from Leslie and she says, well, I was in this store and I noticed that it seemed very much like what I was doing in the warehouse. But in the store, the lighting was better. In this store, the aisles were wider and this and that. So in my head, I'm like, call them, ask them if they're taking applications. She continues on and she says, so I went up and I asked if they were taking applications. Check, don't have to do that. And so I'm like, fill out applications. So I filled out the application and I start on Monday. She has been there for about a year now. Her brother has been at A D C for over a year and a half. So she learned to self advocate. She learned to speak about what she needed. She learned to not just say, yes ma'am, but to ask a question if she didn't understand. And those are some of the lessons that, that I find personally very, those are my favorites. I find those very, very worthwhile. So when I question, did I have a good day today? If I know I have a student who now has that ability, I know I can say yes. We would also invite any other community college that has any desire to learn more about how, how we operate this program, how we fund it, the manpower. I know President Kelly would welcome a call, as would I. And again, thank you for having us. Does anybody have questions? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, good morning. What a tough one to follow. God bless y'all for what y'all are doing. I'm from the Wiregrass area and we do it right with Wiregrass Rehab, with Vivian B. Adams, Danny Knows. But to know that we have a college there, God bless you for what you're doing. I'm grateful, Chancellor, Board, everyone here, for the opportunity to be able to share another piece of my life within the Alabama Community College system. I'm so thankful to Natalie for helping me put this together and for Susan and Neil who thought this was something worth talking about. I came here a few years ago as a communications specialist with the System Office and I was blessed to be able to attend a system-wide professional development training we had where I met Dean Mitchell, who is with Central Alabama Community College. She expressed the desire to want that Prattville campus to grow bigger than what it was. And just so happened I had adjunct before. So I took the opportunity to be able to teach an eight-week hybrid speech class for them as their first speech class on the Prattville campus. Now, as a communicator, the one thing we want to do anytime we're in a new environment, it's kind of environment, is to kind of read the room. And so when I walked into this classroom, I was assuming that I'd run into students who, like me, worked an eight-to-five traditional job and came home afterwards, took a break and wanted to come to class. That could not have been farther from the truth. The students I was engaging with after hours, they were parents, sometimes having to alternate between their children and each other in the car to wait for one to finish. They were full-time workers, particularly in manufacturing and healthcare, who were taking actual leaves of absences from work to be able to take this class because it's required to get a degree in the state of Alabama. You had some that alternated, military members who had to pay a little extra or alternate with the other parent to keep children, as well as some dual enrollment students. And so I got to thinking that there had to be another way to be able to offer them this opportunity in their backyard besides the traditional six to eight o'clock class for eight weeks or a full semester at a time. So I remember my days back at Enterprise State. We had Mr. George Scott who taught a one-week speech class in the summertime. And that was a daytime class, but these students were able to get a full semester of speech within one week at a time. And while I couldn't do that in the daytime, I figured it makes sense to contribute to doing something like that in the evening. And so I put together a proposal to see if we could offer such a thing at the Prattville campus. And Dean Mitchell and President Lynn, I tell you, the audacity at CAC was so strong and they were so ready to give this a try. So we started offering the class from six to 10, Monday through Friday. And then on Saturday and Sunday, we did independent study as well as in-person study to expand our instruction. The first time we offered this was in 2021 and we made a big deal about it. We did press releases, announcements, social media. We decided to do a pop-up shop the Saturday of the class, a pop-up, one-stop shop where students who were interested in CAC in the community could come and see what we were offering. We allowed people to sit in the class, actually hear the speeches, hear the instruction. And this building is the, the older building that we were in. We were in a storefront. Hopefully, if you haven't, you get the opportunity to see what the Prattville site is today. But I tell you, from where we are today, even in that building, we still have the same heart, we still have the same commitment. And nobody could tell us we were a little storefront. We were a community college then and we're a community college today. And if you'll forgive the quality of this video, I want you to hear what some of our first students had to say about that first class.
Hi, I'm Hannah.
I'm Taylor.
I'm Mary Pratt.
I'm Lucia.
And I'm Molly.
And we took the Speech 106 class in one week.
Let us tell you about it.
It's very beneficial because you have a small class and it's more so of a one-on-one kind of thing.
It really helped me. I'm taking four classes as a full-time student and I was able to take this in one week, get it knocked out and focus on my other classes and still getting that full three-hour credit.
Another thing that's beneficial is it's from six to nine. So you can work during the day and then come to class at nine without having to worry about work.
See, like she was saying, I work a full-time job and so I only get one day off a week that I can really focus on schoolwork. So to have this opportunity to get it knocked out in one week was super beneficial and I had more time to focus on my other studies.
And it was really fun. We made friends and we had the most amazing teacher.
Yes.
Yes.
I would recommend it.
And y'all, this is not about me. I'm not a full-time instructor. So I don't know how practical something like this would be for someone who taught all day as well. I'm not a manufacturer or somebody in healthcare whose promotion or raise literally depends on how many credentials or how many degrees I can earn. All I am is a recipient of a lot of grace, a lot of mercy, a lot of ingenuity through my path for success in life. And I'm just so grateful to be able to be that for someone else, to help them reach their next steps in their backyard. And again, he's not, not here today, so I'm not patting him. But I'm so thankful that President Lynn was the kind of leader who goes, heck yeah, let's give it a try. What's the worst that can happen? Because it truly has been a massive return on investment. We started that first year with just five students. Now we're up to 16 in the last one that we did. And then my mini hybrid class, which is about eight weeks long, we've probably taught up to 200 students on that Central Alabama campus. So the fact that he was willing to host this class at a loss the first couple of years, it's more than tripled the benefit later. And now again, I only do this in the summertime. Y'all, I got six kids. We can't do this every semester. And we shouldn't, right? We make sure that other modalities are still practical. Some people need that full semester class. Some people need that hybrid class. But some people also need this one-week class. And so again, I'm just so thankful for a system, Chancellor Baker, somebody who's willing to let us do things like this. It's really a blessing. So that is all I have. Thank y'all again for letting me share. Are there any questions that I can answer for you? Remember, this is my full-time job, y'all. Any questions on the one-week class? All right. Thank y'all for this opportunity.
Well, good morning, everyone. This is a, this is an absolute perfect segue into what I wanted to talk about. Normally I get up in front of you and deliver a very quick enrollment update. It's always good news. I have that today. I want to deliver that. But I wanted to follow up on something that Chancellor Baker asked at our last board meeting. When we were in Selma, after I got done giving an enrollment update, he said, he stopped and he said, Neil, I can't help but feel like there are students in our, in our state or potential students in our state who would be better served if we offered our classes at different, more flexible, more innovative times. And he kind of gave me the charge and said, let's, let's start exploring that. Okay, so we're, so we're exploring that. But the first thing that came to my mind was the one-week course that Ebony is teaching, is, is teaching there at CAC. And again, I know that's happening in pockets across the state. But that was something that stood out to me because I, I was a traditional college student. After I graduated high school, I went to, I moved away, moved three and a half hours away from home, went to college, went there for four years and, and now I, and of course, now I work. My, my wife stays at home with our children. My son is, is five years old. If I need to do something during the workday or if I need to do something at night, I have, I have the support at home to be able to do that. And I think about, there are a lot of people around our state, look at these stories that have just been told by several of our colleges. It required every one of our colleges to think outside of themselves, to think about their community and think about the challenges that the people in their communities face that may not be the same challenges that, that our presidents or our deans or our faculty face. And when I thought about Ebony and that course that she took or that she teaches, I saw two tremendous benefits. One is that if a student needs to take a speech class, but they have children at home, maybe they're a single parent, maybe they, maybe they have a job. It's a lot easier for them to ask, ask their supervisor, can I leave about an hour early so that I can get up to Prattville to take this class? It's a lot easier to ask for that for a week than it is to say, hey, two days a week for the next 18 weeks, I need to take off early or I need to, I need to carve some time out to be able to focus on this class. Another benefit that I saw is, you know, Ebony just said it, she has six kids. Can you imagine trying to find childcare for an entire semester so that she could teach a class? I imagine it's a lot easier for you to ask your, ask your husband or your family, hey, can you watch these kids for a week at night while I, while I teach this class? It's a, it's a little bit of a, little bit of a different story, right? So I just want to thank our colleges for doing that. This is a, this is a really important task that the chancellor has given us. And I want to, I want to let you know, Chancellor, there've been, there's been some significant work on this since last month. And I want to bring Ebony, I want to bring Ebony into the conversation and Natalie English into the conversation as well. As you, you just met Ebony, but Natalie is our Executive Director of Career Technical Education here at the System Office within the Instructional Division. And since that conversation at, in Selma, we've had a lot of conversations here at the System Office about, all right, what does this look like? If we were, if we were to really start exploring more flexible course times, what would that look like? First, we have to ask, what are we already doing? And there's been some research done. We partnered with our organizational research team to start pulling some data. I don't have that data for you today because we just got it, we just got it in the last couple of days and haven't even had a chance to sit down and digest it yet. That meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. So hopefully, over the, over the next few months, we'll have a lot more information about what we are offering as a system, what our colleges are offering. But we do know that a lot of our colleges are already offering night and weekend courses, courses that are outside that traditional, that traditional course time. And we're excited to explore that more and see which courses are, are being offered. Are they career technical? Are they general education? So there's a lot, a lot that's going to happen from there. We're also working to put together a team of people. So right now, the team is Ebony, Natalie and myself. We are working to put together a team made up of individuals from the System Office and from our colleges so that we're able to really dive into this topic and figure out again, what's being offered? What are the challenges? What are the gaps? What are the opportunities? And we've had several names that have already floated to the top who we feel like are going to be someone who can contribute to that conversation in a really positive and a really innovative way. So again, I just want to say thank you to Ebony and thank you to Natalie for the conversation we've had thus far. It's been really beneficial and I know it's going to continue to be. So now I'm going to jump into the enrollment update. Oh, I did want to mention one other thing. And Dr. Chris Cox reminded me of this as he and I were talking about the flexible course scheduling. Some of our, some of the people at our colleges have, and, and at our System Office have already been involved in implementing a software called AdAstra. AdAstra is a software that is designed to help colleges make better use of their space and be able to make, and be able to create more, more efficient, more productive course schedules, factoring in things like historic enrollment trends, student success rates, things like that, so that we know, okay, hey, this, this class, success rates aren't very good if it's offered at 7:30 in the morning. But if it's offered at 2:30 in the, in the afternoon, it might be a better success rate. Or, hey, we know that students have come in for these particular degree programs and they're, and they're currently focusing on these courses, which means next semester, we're going to have to have these courses. A lot of things that, that our colleges have been doing manually and, and really having to, having to put some manual thought behind. Hopefully, some of that will be automated. But as a part of that, there's a great deal of data that is being pulled and a lot of conversations that are being had. So we think that that's going to contribute to this conversation about flexible course scheduling as well. So again, I want to thank Chancellor Baker for the, for the task, for the assignment. And it's, it's already spawned some really wonderful conversations and I know it's going to continue to do so. All right. So the enrollment update. For Fall '23, our head count right now is 83,538 students. That's 6.39% ahead of where we were final Fall 2022. If that, if that number holds, and I suspect it will because we are so late into the term and we are really past the point where students are, are going to be dropping in, in heavy numbers, that'll be our highest fall head count since the fall of 2013, 2014. It's a big number, something to celebrate. Our colleges have worked so hard to make this happen. Credit hour production is over 720,000. That is 4.79% ahead of where we were final Fall 2022. 21 colleges ahead in credit hour production, 20 are ahead, I'm sorry, 21 in, ahead in head count. And 20 of those colleges are ahead in, in credit hour production. Again, this is really exciting. Kudos to our colleges, to our, to our presidents for being innovative and thinking about how can we better serve our community. And a lot of that is happening because again, they're, they're not, they're not just continuing to do things the same old way that they, that we have for years and years. I don't have a significant Spring '24 update. We, we have already, we've collected over 17,000 applications for Spring '24 so far. We've actually had, including new students and returning students, we've had 23,000, almost 24,000 students who are registered for Spring '24. Our first Spring '24 enrollment report last year was not pulled until the middle of November. So we don't have a, a good comparative data right now. But, but next month, during the December board meeting, we should be able to have much better comparative numbers to show you. And we'll even have some of that here in the next, in the next several days. But given the Fall 2023 increase that we have, it's a, I don't know that, that I'd say it's a phenomenon. I think it's just a fact. If enrollment is high in the, in the fall, if it's higher in the fall, it's probably going to be higher in the spring total too. So we're expecting another increase in Spring 2024, which we're really excited about. Chancellor Baker, I'm sure you remember this. I don't know if anyone else does. But while I was standing at this podium several months back, you said that you wanted us to start pulling non-credit data in the same, non-credit enrollment data in the same way that we pull four-credit enrollment, which I think was a really nice assignment, something that, that we were really excited about. And as soon as I sat down in my chair after, after you asking about that, my phone started, started getting messages where people are saying, hey, we're actually working on this. This is something that we've, we've done some significant work on. So I want to tell you, our Workforce Division, IT Division, Innovation Center and, and several others have really partnered together over the last several, over the last few months, over the last several weeks to be able to create enrollment reports that reflect non-credit learners. This report includes adult education, specifically the ABE, GED and English Second Language Program. Again, more adult education programs that are, that are more on the workforce readiness side, MAPS, ACE and AMP. Then we also have continuing education students, Innovation Center, Skills for Success students, online third-party vendors, personal enrichment and youth. There are several other programs that fall into that workforce, adult education, into those areas that were previously not reflected on our enrollment reports that I would give. And so, and so these data are being pulled now and I want to share that with you. But they're being pulled now for the first, for the first time in this way. So this time next year, we will have good comparative reports to be able to show you. But right now, I can show you the raw numbers for where we are. So the number of registrations in adult education programs, again, the ABE, GED, ESL, ACE, MAPS and AMP, total over 15,000, 15,216 students. And you can see how those break down specifically by that program. In the workforce development area, we have over 8,800 registrations. These numbers only reflect from August 1st until October 31st. One thing that, one, one thing that is interesting about workforce education, non-credit education, adult education, is that students can enter these programs at any time. Unlike, unlike our normal college schedules where somebody will start at the beginning of a, of what is a traditional fall term or spring term, we're really having to pull these reports in such a way that we can try to compare apples to apples, that we can try to give you a reflection and say, here's what it looks like in the fall of 2023. So some of these students may, so we'll have students enroll today for these programs for the very first time. They'll register today and tomorrow. And so these numbers will continue to grow throughout the, throughout the term. But total registrations, 24,022 students as of October 31st for the fall of, of 2023. Again, that's over and above what is happening on our, on our four-credit numbers. And I think I gave you those numbers, well, I gave you those numbers, about 83,000 students. So you take, I'm sorry, I'm trying to go back. Well, I've lost my numbers there. But 22,000 over and above 83,000, that's 105,000 students who are being educated in some form or fashion by the community college system for the fall term alone. Those are big numbers. And, and I think it speaks to what our presidents are doing. They're working very hard to serve their communities. Our System Office is working hard to try to support that and guide that and create policy and advocate for, and advocate for the citizens of our state so that they can take advantage of these programs. So I want to, want to pause there and ask any questions or ask for any questions. But that's a much longer update than I normally give. But I just thank you for the opportunity. But I just thank you for the opportunity. All right. Thank you so much.
Well, Susan started us out by saying this section of the agenda was going to be devoted to living the, the mission. But as I listened to the six presenters, there seemed to be one theme that I felt comes across in all of them. And that is a theme of meeting people where they are. Whether it's Dr. Mitchell talking about the rural aviation program, Craig Field in terms of using, repurposing an asset that has served that area very well, bringing it back to life for a new group of folks, or whether it's Chief Bailey and the work that he's doing with the presidents and the chiefs on the various campuses to make sure that there is not only a proactive, but a also reactive force to work with folks where they are and whatever may be causing them to do things that may not be positive. Teresa Mays, Dr. Mays talked about the Saturday program at Trenton with Dr. Kimba. Chambers of meeting folks around their schedules. You know, that's a big thing in terms of, I can't work, I can't get there. Dr. Kelly and the Rise program, I mean, what can you say? In terms of helping a group of people who are differently abled to actually function and be productive in a world that all too often does not see them as being abled at all. And then we had Ebony Horton and using her skills in a different way, very creatively to meet folks who need, have a week to spare, but they're willing to learn. And last but not least, Dr. Scott talking about how those, all of those things come together in those numbers that he gives, but the livelihood of those is we're meeting people where they are to get those numbers. And it's more than numbers. So for me, I thought it was a very good snapshot of all of the things that are going on. And I'm sure there's lots more on our campuses every day and we thank each and every one of you, however you fall into that. And before I move on, I also would like to especially talk to, just a second, for Teresa and Madison for taking their time to come and be with us. I think that is of note because far too much, we don't look at folks of what they can do, but we look at what folks cannot do. And in their cases, they are pursuing either education or skill that gives them a place and a voice that they so richly deserve. So I'd like to say thank you to the two of you especially and to your colleagues who opted not to miss work. We applaud them for their work ethic and, and making sure that they keep those jobs and are very good and productive coworkers. So Dr. Kelly, we thank you for what you're doing. I'm, I'm trying to find the person who was standing there with you as well.
She left.
She left. Okay. I thought it was just my bad eyesight. But just to say thank you to, to them for supporting those folks as well. So now I will ask if there are committee reports. Or anybody else. If we don't have any committee reports, we do have the work session to follow in this room. It's now about 11:37. Why don't we come back at 11:50? And we'll go, we'll start our work session. So we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll pull the box. She came through. Uh, let me tell you, I thought I was. It's like a break. You guys just have. Stop. And I have, I have every given play. Cause they want to save the. I told you. That didn't take me. That, that. That's how. Yeah. This is. I'm. I'm. Yeah. I definitely. I got it. I told you. I told you. That didn't take me. Exactly. That, that. That's how. Yeah. Yeah. I said. I'm. 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 How you doing? I saw you from the distance.
Oh, yeah. I was paying attention.
All right. I bet I, I get a new pair. Send them back.
Yeah, I'll try.
See you. Thank you, Chair. If everyone could make their way back to our seat, we will get started with the work session. Yes, I see. Look. I can, I can listen out of all those people too. I wish I could take care of it. And so when I see that. Oh. Hmm. What's wrong? Say, Ron. And we have a number of items that are before us and we'll start with the Executive Committee. Executive.
The, the first item on the work session agenda is Calhoun Community Colleges' request that the Board of Trustees review and approve its current mission statement. Are there any questions on that item? The next item is Lawson State's request that the Board of Trustees review and approve its current mission statement. Any questions on this item? The next item is Coastal Alabama Community Colleges' request that the Board of Trustees review and approve its current mission statement. Are there any questions on this item?
Good morning. I'm not going to ask you to re-review and approve the current budget. We are looking for a new budget. As you've heard, we are going through significant focuses on new programs, new initiatives, and that all takes new money. And so the budget that you have before you for the FY '24 period addresses many of those focuses of the, of the system throughout. Most, or there's several outline items in there with a 5% increase, and that's just to accommodate for inflationary costs. I will make a special note, we had a roll-up of the 30 million, uh, I'm sorry, the 30-step increase that the legislature funded last year. We're not removing that from the O&M request. We've just rolled it into the O&M request so that it would be distributed to the colleges through the standard allocation formula. I'll bring your attention to several of the major new or increase in funding. Specifically, $10 million for dual enrollment, $1 million for adult ed, the Innovation Center at $5 million, and then the LPN program at $2 million. Obviously, from all the stories that you regularly hear from your board meetings and with all of your discussions throughout the state, you know these are all highly deserving, desirable, and employable opportunities for these programs. And so we're doing all we can to help continue the funding and the perpetuation of these programs throughout our state, and we appreciate all the support that you give us in the, in that regard. There are four new line item requests on here, and Boone will be bringing forward an official legislative agenda for your review and consideration in the next month or so, that will have additional details with these. But they include a $2 million for short-term credentialing scholarships, $30 million for career tech initiatives, $6 million for career roadmaps, and $25 million for a capital improvement fund. That capital improvement fund, as you know, would only make a small dent in their overall needs of our facility projects, but we feel it's critical for the ongoing success of our colleges. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Board members. Chancellor Baker. We have eight projects for your consideration this morning, starting with the first one being at Calhoun. This is for the Ister Building renovation for their STEAM program, specifically focusing on the graphic arts technology and digital design that is going to be expanded into the building in downtown Decatur. This information, we did review with you last week. It's in your board packet. This is the property that we did acquire last year. And then we've included in there the floor plan that shows the changes that we'll make in the space for the academic uses for STEAM. The architect that we have working with us on this project is Lathan, but this will be a complete renovation. We finished the, the gutting and the demolition of the space, and we are now ready, and we'll be bringing back bids to you for the build-out of the area here in the next couple of weeks. This is in there, the schedule as well, or in the packet in terms of milestones. We are chopping this up a little bit to extract out of there some early-release equipment and for mechanical and electrical. We think this will help us with some of the lead-time issues that we have been discussing for, in recent months regarding all of our projects. Completion of the project, we expect to have this online in the third quarter of next year. Any questions about Ister and the renovation for the STEAM Imagination Center? The next one, Board members, is Trenham at Executive Park. This is the one where we are expanding the footprint of Trenham into a new campus with the purchase of the Blunt property. We have four buildings that are moving in the design right now to renovate. This will be close to 100,000 square feet. We refer to them as Buildings A, B, C, and D. We've included in here the floor plans and the design that will go into these three buildings and the development of the space for instruction that will focus primarily for culinary arts and more importantly, well, not more importantly, but most uniquely, this, most of the space will be designed for healthcare programs that the college is expanding and adding. These, this milestone schedule that we set is overwhelming. We have employed the services of SCM to help us with this and again, trying to break down and be aggressive, not only in the schedule of things that we can do now to allow the design work to be completed in the first half of next year, but also to try to drive competition to the project. I did see the, the preliminary list of demolition contractors. I was amazed, and we have over 25 to close to 30 demolition contractors identified. We are going to pre-qualify those and try to get some top-tier contractors to help us with this, just because of the scope, size and scope of the work, but we're optimistic about the, being able to have competition and such a large interest in this project. Board members, any questions about Executive Park and the renovation of this campus?
Mark, just.
Yes, sir.
One question on the demolition. Is the environmental being as it's set, is it a part of demo package?
We have proactively, we've consulted with another group to identify where the hazardous materials are. That knowledge goes into the bid package, and they respond in their price to handle those materials properly. That is the Trenham project. The next one, Board members, moving over to Shelton, is at the Fred Campus, we have Building 100 and 400 on this campus that the college is wanting and moving forward with to put a standing metal seam. We've been holding out on these roofs a little while. They've needed to be re-roofed. The college is going to take the architectural theme of standing metal seam roofs throughout the campus with these two buildings. The schematic and so forth with the improvements of the roof design and so forth is included in your packet, so you can see the elevations and then the profiles of how some of the changes to these two buildings will be impacted. The schedule for this, Board members, we're still planning to receive bids later this month and bring those returns back to you for approval in the December board meeting. And then we've included the financial schedules inside of your information that you have as a board. Any questions about retrofits for roofing at Shelton on the Fred Campus? The next one takes us down south to Reed State. Located there at the Technical College is Building 600, and this project, Board members, is for the renovation of the cosmetology portion of the building. We are not doing the other half of the building, which has the diesel mechanic program in it. We're focusing on cosmetology. This building was scheduled in the plan to be looked at in about two years, but the mechanical system for heating and cooling failed prematurely at the end of August going into September. We looked at options to see what we could do to put a, a solution in there, and it just wasn't going to be cost-effective. So we accelerated this. The architects are moving and engineers at a rapid pace with the design, with the mechanical solution. And this design that we see here is what the college has settled in on in terms of modernizing the space for their programs. We have a demolition package that is going to be coming into us here for action in December. And then we've got early-release materials that we hope to be able to identify with the help of engineering as early as December to take action and get those things ordered, and then the bids will come and go out and have action either January or February at the latest. We are moving to have this back online for the students so that we finish up our work next July. So it is very rapid in terms of what we're doing, and we feel confident at this point that we can make that happen. Board members, any questions about the renovation of the cosmetology building or program in Building 600 at Reed State? The next project, Board members, takes us up to the northeast to Gadsden, and this is for the baseball and softball complex. And this really is a renewal at the college there of their baseball program and dealing with the needs that they have with softball. Some of this is motivated highly because of some of the equity issues between softball and baseball. This site that's been identified to go, complements the project that is already in progress there by the city of Gadsden in the building of this sportsplex. And this venue is really going to be on the border of the banks of the Couso River, and the layout that we have here schematically shows the baseball and the softball field, how they're laid out. We have a shared space that is in there, Board members, for concessions and then restrooms that will complement both facilities. It does include work that will also expand parking and create additional space for patrons and visitors to come and enjoy these events as they occur. We included in there as well some floor plan and elevations of what's happening. Bids are still tracking to come in in November, and the results to be brought back to you for action in the, in the December board meeting. Any, project also, one other point is, we expect to have this work completed. It'll take us till the fourth quarter of next year. Any questions about Gadsden and the baseball and softball project? The next one, Board members, is also at Gadsden. This is the renovation of Wallace Hall. This is their performing and fine arts building and program. You can see from this look, this drawing here, this slide, the location of it in proximity to both of the campuses there. The building, the renovation is to deal with the elevations and exterior of the front as well as going in and modernizing the classrooms and the offices and the practice rooms for music that are taught there at the college. Another elevation that we did include in your package, just to compare what's happening. The architecture that's beginning to emerge at the college is what you see here. That is beginning to be run across the campus, and over the next couple of decades, we'll see more and more of that architecture as buildings are renovated. We do expect bids at the end of November, and then this project, we expect will be completed within a year and be finished up sometime in the fourth quarter of 2024. Any questions about the Wallace Hall renovation? Next one goes down to LBW, Orlean B. Wallace, and on the Andalusia Campus, we have here the introduction or the, of the Avenue Construction Sciences Trades Lab there in LBW. You can see the proximity of where that building is going to go in relation to the campus. It's a 10,000-square-foot building. A larger portion of the building is a conditioned space that has labs, offices, and so forth. And then the yellow is an outdoor space. It will not be conditioned for heating or cooling. It's just an area that they can go and have a sheltered location to work on some of the skills that pertain to the construction trades. We included in here elevations that show all four sides to the building. The screening that you see here is the back and side, which represents the outdoor area to this building. We do expect bids will be coming in towards the end of November. This schedule has slipped a little bit, and, but we still anticipate being able to bring those results back to you for action in the December board meeting. Construction of this, we expect to have it completed and ready for the fall semester of next year. Any questions about LBW and the Construction Trades Building? This is one of those projects that is being funded and driven legislatively to make this happen down there at this location. The next one, Board members, is up at Wallace State in Hanceville. This is for some paving improvements that are on the campus there. We have in here a couple of drawings that do show the areas that have been identified in the way of parking spaces, intersections, and just roads that do need improvement and resurfacing with asphalt. The architects are shamless and king for this project. We do expect that bids will still come in on time for the board to take action. We did indicate that this is a, a budget item that is below the board threshold of $500,000. So this may be the very last time you hear or see of this project if the board, if the bids do come in and are below that action item for, that trigger board's approval. We brought this before you in the event that this does go over budget and the college desires and wants to proceed with the work. Board member, that is all eight projects. Any questions?
Just a general question. Are you, with, with the demo, number of demo contractors coming up on that job, is that something you're seeing across all the trades or just?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
I'm, I'm just curious. It's interesting that all the demo folks all kind of piled up first, but.
I think, one of the things that we are beginning to see, Mr. Shell, is that the more in advance, we are now marketing and communicating projects, you know, four, five, six, seven months ahead of time, we're beginning to see a greater following. And so historically, instead of just getting substantial completion, and then when the architects feel like they're ready and want to take and announce a project, I think the proactive approach that we're all taking, that's really come out of the Facility Committee, is making a difference. And so we're seeing more participation, I think, that really correlates well with our emphasis and shift, you know, three or four months ago. Thank you, Board members.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
The last item on the work session agenda is Chattahoochee Valley's request that the Board of Trustees approve an additional instructional site for the college at East Alabama Medical Center. The cost to the college for this new instructional site is zero. The hospital is providing the space at no cost to the college. And this is a rather win-win situation for both the college and the hospital in that the hospital is in need of LPNs, and that need is escalating. With this program operating at the, at the hospital itself, the students will be given the opportunity to work while they're going to school and almost have a guaranteed job when they finish. So again, this is, this is a win-win. Anyone have any questions?
That's great. Price is Right.
Thank you.
Nice. Does anyone have any additional items or any discussion points? If not, we adjourn.